Good afternoon. I'm calling the October 28, 2020, meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission's Study Session to Order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Irvin.
Present.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Commissioner Lewin.
Present.
Commissioner Song.
Present.
Vice Chair Maruzzi.
Here.
Chair Wermuth.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we open public comment, I believe that our attorney, Jim Priest, is going to say a few words.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I just wanted to give a very brief comment before we begin our study session this afternoon. I want to just advise the Planning Commission that we're here on a scoping meeting today, study session, as opposed to an official public hearing where you would be considering a possible final approval. This is a preliminary process, and as such, under our municipal code, when we consider planned development districts and other pre-applications like this, it specifically says, and I'll read the code section, "The Commission may provide comments to the applicant but shall not take any action, nor shall it preliminarily indicate approval, conditional approval, or disapproval of the proposed project at this stage." So I would advise the Commission that feel free to ask questions. If you have some input and comment you want to offer the applicant, feel free to do so. But I would advise you not to express any statements of, "I support the project," "I don't support the project," "I couldn't support the project if it did this but didn't do this." This is really just a question-answer input-and-comment session this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is public comment. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Do we have members? I'm seeing that we have members of the public present. Flynn, could you open public comment period?
Madam Chair, we have not had anyone contact us requesting to speak under public comment. I would just ask if there is anyone who has joined the meeting who wishes to do so, if they would just please indicate if they wish to make public comments now. Those who are applicants representing cases on the study session agenda will be allowed to speak as directed when the item is discussed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under this portion of public comment? Hearing no one, Madam Chair, we may go ahead and begin with the agenda.
Thank you. The first item before us is the West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation for a Planned Development District Pre-Application to construct a 71-unit affordable housing development on an undeveloped 1.76-acre site located at the southwest corner of North Palm Canyon Drive and Stevens Road. I had asked, and staff report, please, and I'd also asked, as the chair, if we could have possibly the applicant present and the members of the community development staff and possibly DAP that are working on this project to be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so as you noted, this is a pre-application project that is coming before you in anticipation of a planned development district application. Because this is an affordable housing project and the density that is being requested, the process does require that they submit a PDD application. So as a part of that ordinance, the city requires a pre-application initially, and then the formal application will be submitted. And I'll get into some of those details in the presentation. But the site in question is what you see here on the screen. It is the two parcels that are outlined in dashed lines, fronting Palm Canyon Drive and Stevens Road. The property extends back to Camino Norte, and the property is C1 along the Palm Canyon half of the property and R2 towards the back half of the site. The image on the screen here is a rendering of the proposed development within the existing conditions. So you see, obviously, the background. In the background, the mountains. In the foreground is the street sidewalk. You'll note there is a bus stop on the left side, and on the right is Stevens Road. So this was what the applicant has provided to give you a sense of the project along Palm Canyon. Also, another rendering of the project along Palm Canyon, and various perspectives, renderings along Stevens and Palm Canyon. So the site consists of 71 units in total. They are providing 72 parking spaces, as you can see on the lower portion of the site. So that would be on the westerly half of the property as it extends from Stevens Road to Camino Norte. The building is fronting Palm Canyon Drive and extends along towards the southerly portion of the site, the southwest of the site. They do anticipate a series of steps to adjust the proposed project to the existing conditions. The site is elevated somewhat from Palm Canyon, and there are existing retaining walls that hold the current topography on the property as it fronts Palm Canyon. So as I said, it is a 71-unit development. This is the first floor of the project. As you'll see, they are proposing one-bedroom units for all of the units. I believe the manager's unit may be a little bit larger. And then they also propose the communal spaces that you see at the top left, near the corner of Palm Canyon Drive and Stevens Road. And that consists of a communal kitchen, a lounge area, and a fitness recreation and library computer rooms. They also have laundry facilities that are communal as well, and they'll have a large lobby and lounge space, as I mentioned. On the second floor, you'll see also a number of units that are proposed. They are, again, one-bedroom units. And what you can see on this as well is they do propose fairly large eaves that extend away from the building, and you can see that in the kind of the hatched area on the top and bottom of the building. And that eve does extend, or the overhang does extend, over the parking area, so that will provide shading for about half of the parking areas. And this is the roof plan that also shows those large overhangs. The height of the project is 30 feet at the top of the building, and that would be at the highest point of the shed roofs or the sloped roofs. Their second floor is a plate height of 21 feet 4 inches, and you can see that this is taken from the existing conditions, which, as I said, these are elevated. The site is elevated slightly above Palm Canyon a few feet. There are portions that, as they get towards the rear of the property in the R2 zone, that are 24 feet in height, and that would be consistent with the R2 zoning standard. This is the south elevation. As you can see, the 30-foot height is what is permitted and proposed on Palm Canyon. And as you get towards the rear of the site, on the left side, towards Camino Norte, it's a 24-foot plate height to the top of the structure. So the project is located within the mixed-use general plan land use designation. The definition of that designation allows up to 15 dwelling units per acre. However, a project can have up to 30 dwelling units per acre if approved under a planned development district. And so the project is 1 and 3/4 acres in size at the 30 dwelling units per acre. That would allow for about 52 units. Under the city's density bonus ordinance, they can achieve the 71 units that are proposed. In terms of the other development standards, the project does comply with the height that is permitted in the C1 zone, that would be 30 feet, as well as the 24-foot maximum height in the R2 zone. And as I have noted, this height is taken from existing conditions, and so that would be the existing grade on the property. Setbacks on Palm Canyon are 5 feet, as well as Stevens, they are 5 feet, which complies with the C1 standard. The interior yards are roughly 10 to 24 feet, depending on the location, to comply with the R2 standard. And then there is a 25-foot setback off of Camino Norte. In terms of the process, this project is coming forward as a pre-application, as I've noted, per the requirements of the Planned Development District Section 9403 requirements. The applicant has had a neighborhood meeting in accordance with the city's municipal code requirements, and that was conducted on Monday. And so staff did attend that virtual meeting, and there were roughly 15 or 16 participants that were a part of that meeting, including members of the public, as well as the applicant and the development team, to answer questions and provide a presentation to the neighbors. So they have satisfied that requirement, and as I've noted, under the pre-application requirement, they do have to do a study session, which is why the item is before you today. It will come back after they've gotten through today's session as a formal Planned Development District application, and that would go to the Planning Commission and City Council at public hearings. So that concludes staff's presentation. I am happy to answer questions that the Commission may have, and the applicant is also on the line in the event that the Commission has specific questions on the use or anything specific to how the property will be run. Thank you.
Are there questions of staff? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Thanks for the presentation. In terms of recent laws the states enacted limiting some reviews or passing rules about reviews, does that impact this process at all?
Under the state requirements, projects that are permitted by right-of-zone, the city would be required to adhere to those timelines and limited review. But because this is coming through as a Planned Development District application, it is a discretionary review, and they have to do the Planned Development District application in order to achieve the density that is proposed.
Okay, thank you.
You attended, I want to ask a question. You attended the neighborhood meeting. Can you indicate what issues were raised at the neighborhood meeting?
Certainly. So some of the residents that attended or joined the meeting had some questions about the integration of the project relative to their adjacent property. So the Pompeii Residential Development directly abutting the site had some questions about sightlines into the private spaces in their sideyards or their courtyards adjacent to the site, as well as some questions about, there was another HOA that had some questions about traffic impacts and street parking relative to their development, and asked the applicant to investigate addressing or minimizing traffic impacts to the adjacent Camino Norte area. So there were some questions and comments about that, and the applicant did say that they would follow up with them to work with them on addressing those items.
And just as a question, I had heard that there were with the Las Palmas neighborhood, there were questions about integrating the project into the commercial the commercial area, uh, as it im- as it abuts the commercial area to the north. Uh, can you report on that? Or what I had heard was they want the commercial portion at ground
So they, uh, yes, there have been some comments that we've seen about um, integrating a commercial component into the project, uh, at least at the street corner. Uh, the site does have a mix of residential units that front it towards the southerly portion of the site, as well as some communal spaces that uh, are integrated near the street corner. So they do have um, some kind of common activity areas that would be facing Palm Canyon. Um, but it's not a separate uh, restaurant per se that is specifically available to the public at this point. Um, and so really those communal spaces that they have at the corner are for the residents. Um, and they would, as, from what I've heard from the applicant, be doing things that would be um, you know, more lively to the street. And that would be like cook- cooking classes or um, different fitness classes or things like that. And the applicant may be able to elaborate on those specifics. Um, so again, it's not a, a separate commercial component. It would be um, really specific for the residents.
And can we hear from Mr. Verara or the applicant regarding the affordability in this project, the choices, the financing? Uh, what, what the project is in terms of affordable housing? Uh, and what the, basically the affordability limits, the choice on senior housing um, versus workforce housing and what, what they're looking for in the way of additional financing that hasn't been funded yet?
Yes. Uh, good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, you know, when-
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes. Uh, Jay Verata, Director of Community and Economic Development for the City of Palm Springs. Um, when we uh, initially issued the RFP for the sale of these properties, uh, we were welcoming market rate units as well as affordable units. And so, uh, when the council made the selection to move forward with West Hollywood uh, Community Housing Corporation, uh, a- at that point, we did ask them for uh, more details on what they were proposing in terms of financing and affordability. And what we received back from West Hollywood was um, uh, I believe, uh, all units would be uh, very low income and developer can correct me if that's not correct. Uh, I believe I thought I saw thirty percent and below of area median income was the plan. Uh, and so financing for those types of units, uh, there's, there's a, there's a vast array of financing targeting uh, this group because it's the most in need. So it is sort of on the advantageous side to get supplemental financing, but on the disadvantage side because tenants will not be paying uh, marker rents, market rate rents. In fact, they'll be well below market rate, which of course is the objective here. Um, how did I do, Mr. Mason?
Uh, hello, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jay. Uh, my name is Matt Mason. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for West Hollywood Three D Housing Corporation. Um, so, uh, you did great, Jay. Um, the, the sources of funding that were um, that we are looking to assemble to um, to pay for the proposed project would include lower-income housing tax credits, which would limit uh, residents' income anywhere from um, eighty percent of the area median income in Riverside County down to um, as low as thirty percent or below. Um, and then there are other soft funding sources that we will also be seeking, um, which will have their own affordability levels built in as well. But um, to start out with um, seniors, um, decision to go with the senior population, um, when we were um, looking into proposing for this project, uh, we consulted with, of course, Desert AIDS Project and with our partners in um, City Palm Springs and their own research, and just identified overwhelming need um, just across the board for affordable housing. There's a really strong need for senior housing, for workforce housing, just all types of affordable housing. Um, but um, but senior housing was the population that's um, that made sense considering the site and um, considering um, funding sources available. And also um, just referencing recent reports um, in City Palm Springs on um, the need uh, for homeless housing and for preventing people from falling into homelessness. Um, it, it really pointed towards a, a strong need for the provision of, of affordable housing for seniors at all level. So we are um, currently, for example, going after No Place Like Home funds. Uh, this is a state funding source administered by Riverside County. And this would include um, um, soft finance for the site that um, come from the state and the county. That would come with um, the requirement that this portion of the population, twenty-five of the seventy-one units, be reserved for seniors who are currently homeless. Um, and that's just one example of how a, a funding source sort of layers on affordable level. Um, those twenty-five units would all be for people making up to thirty percent of the AMI, which is, like Jane mentioned, very low income level. And then we would also look at um, including a component of um, a population, a senior population that could go up to sixty, uh, and maybe even eighty percent of their AMI. So that would be senior housing, but still potentially um, sort of a workforce of, uh-
What do you think of rents right now for thir- sixty and, and eighty percent of AMI?
Sure. So the rents are set at um, the county level. So sixty percent rent, um, and we're talking about all one-bedrooms here. So sixty percent rents for a one-bedroom is seven hundred and fifty-four dollars currently. And this is also connected to a maximum um, annual income that the resident can make. And they're expected to pay no more than about thirty percent of their income in rents. So um, eighty percent would be um, one thousand dollars a month. And then thirty percent rents would be um, approximately three hundred and seventy-seven dollars a month.
And thirty percent of your units will be uh, very low income and they will be homeless. Are there any very low incomes that are not previously homeless?
Yes. So we would have a range of incomes, but um, we are currently looking at uh, twenty-five of the total units as um, homeless housing. And then um, an additional at least seven units, if not more, at thirty percent or, or possibly forty percent.
And just as a question, um, given that you're dealing with homeless housing and uh, my background is in supportive housing and affordable housing, do you have any service? Are you providing services that will keep people housed? And are there any service rooms in the development?
Absolutely. So we've included, um, I think, two uh, large service provider offices in our floor plans, in addition to a full-time building manager's office. So, um, the two service provider offices will be available for the um, uh, the multiple service providers that uh, will provide services on-site. So Desert AIDS Project is here today, Carl Baker. Uh, we will be working with Desert AIDS Project to provide services on-site. Um, in addition, the No Place Like Home program comes with funding from the Riverside County Health uh, Center. And they would provide services on-site specific to that homeless population. Um, and there'd be an office for them as well. And then West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation would provide um, resident services for all uh, sixty-nine low-income units on, on the site.
One of the questions that was raised to us, and I don't know if other people have questions of the applicant, I'm asking some, I, I should open it up. But I did want, we've got letters regarding parking. Um, and you're seventy-one, you have seventy-one units for sixty-nine. How do, how would you allocate parking when people do not have, um, do not have cars? I would assume that you anticipate a percentage of this population to not require a parking space. So what would you do with those additional spaces? And would they be used for people who visit the site?
Yeah. So we um, recently did a survey of, a comprehensive survey of all of our um, senior, low-income senior residents, and found that um, approximately sixty percent of the senior units own a car, or, or keep a car parked um, on-site. And so we, we expect that that would be about the same percentage um, for agave at Palm Canyon. Um, we are proposing to provide seventy-two parking spaces. So um, this also exceeds the um, the required parking on sites. And we would anticipate that the remainder of the spaces would be used by the two on-site full-time building managers, a day manager and a night manager. Um, the service providers, both from Desert AIDS Project and WHCFC, so Housing Corporation, um, as well as from um, Riverside County Health, um, Health Center. And then there, there would be additional spaces for visitor parking as well. Will, uh, Will Carson is the project architect from sixty-four million, and um, he's, is here available to, to-
Before I turn this over, uh, can we have just some comments from Desert AIDS Project about the service component? And are there any questions I've failed, we failed to ask you regarding what you're doing that you'd like to amplify? Or just say more about?
Um, uh, no. Um, thank you. Thank you for that opportunity.
If we have Desert AIDS Project here?
Hi Kathy, uh, Chris Carl, I'm here. So uh, we will provide, uh, we're going into MOU with the, with West Hollywood Group to provide social services. We will have a full-time staff person uh, working with them to do all types of guidance, from linking people to medical care, dental care, behavioral health service care, and partnering with the county for the behavioral health component. Uh, but also for people that are eligible, depending on their income levels, uh, there's transportation services, food vouchers, uh, work with our food pantry, and any other type of social interaction and integration. Also, working with the seniors center and specifically those issues that relate to seniors in terms of Medi-Cal, Medicare, and the Part D, the donut hole, and any type of assistance they need for their medical services.
And will you be involved in the resident selection?
No, not at all.
So West Hollywood will be doing that?
Oh, that's correct.
And just, just for, for the record, uh, Carl, because you're in the community, do you anticipate that there would be any issues with lease-up on this?
Oh, not at all. For our, our seventy units, we have, we have a waiting list of one to two years, depending on the, or, on the level of income.
Thank you. Uh, app, questions from members of the commission? Uh, yes. Sorry. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I have a question. Um, I heard, um, the, uh, I think his name is, uh, Mr. Mason. Um, I heard he spoke about the uh, overall amount of units and the percentages. Um, looking here on the overall, it shows uh, seventy-one units. And it shows fifteen of them are for homeless. And then it also shows seventy, seventeen are for low-income seniors. And then that's at thirty percent. And then I see there's thirty-seven at eighty percent. So it looks like about half of those are eighty percent. Um, would you be willing to give more to the homeless and lower income?
So, um, Commissioner Urban, um, I think those numbers have changed a little bit. I, I apologize since last um, updated. So we are, we are currently seeking twenty-five um, project-based vouchers and um, funding for twenty-five units for um, uh, for, uh, formerly homeless seniors, or currently homeless seniors. Um, and then we would um, include at least an additional seven units um, at, at very low income levels. Um, and that comprises about half of the low-income units. And then for the remainder of the units, we're really just looking at up to eighty percent. We, we are willing and um, we would in fact have to sort of explore sort of a range of, of income levels uh, between thirty and, and eighty percent. So yes, we are willing to look at lower, or, or-
And then have you guys, have you guys taken into consideration with the uh, transportation? Is there any uh, lines that, that um, commute to some of the resources for the senior community?
So we're lucky to be sort of centrally located to a number of, of senior resources, including a senior center just a couple of blocks to the south. Um, I, I believe there's a, uh, a, a, a medical center just again, a couple of blocks to the south and to the east. And we are very fortunate to be, to be directly in front of the bus line, which provides um, service along Palm Canyon Drive as, as well. And uh, like Carl mentioned, uh, we do plan to provide um, transportation assistance to those who need transportation assistance.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, it's twenty-five for the homeless and about twenty-four for thirty percent? And then the rest will be for the eighty percent?
So twenty-five for the homeless, at least seven additional at thirty percent. And then um, thirty-seven up to eighty percent, but some range. And I apologize, we're still putting together our funding sources. So um, that flexibility allows us to sort of-
So, so the thirties, the thirty-seven at eighty percent, that's more than seventy-one, isn't it?
Twenty-five, plus twenty-five and seven is thirty-two units uh, at thirty percent. And then um, an additional thirty-five at um, up to eighty percent. Sorry, an additional thirty-seven at up to um, thirty, fifty, eighty percent. It should, it should be about half and half. So half at thirty percent and half at more than that.
So half at, at thirty percent and, and below for homeless, and then half for eighty percent?
Up to eighty percent.
Up to eighty percent. Okay. All right, thanks.
Following up on that question, I'm assuming that as you amass your funding sources, you will have other restrictions on affordability that may take that um, thirty-five units or so, uh, may make additional units affordable?
That, that's correct.
That, that always happens, Commissioner Urban. With, how many funding sources do you think you'll have in this?
So um, we're looking at both state, county, and potentially local sources as well. Um, so potentially three soft sources, as well as a conventional one as well.
How many of the units will have Section Eight?
Twenty-five.
Thirty-five, so-
Twenty, twenty-five, sorry.
Twenty-five. So that the homeless units will have Section Eight and the three hundred and thirty-seven dollars you anticipate they'll be paying will be assisted with that Section Eight, or will be kept to, at least to that level with Section Eight?
It would be, the three, the three hundred that I mentioned, the maximum rent, is the most that the tenant themselves will have. And if they cannot, the Section Eight would assist them with that as well.
I have a question from Commissioner Song. And we haven't seen the architect yet, so go ahead.
Actually, you just covered it. I was wondering when the architect was coming up.
Uh, the architect, is the architect here?
Yes, uh, right here, yep.
Would you like to talk about the architecture?
I'd be happy to. Um, thank, thank you all for uh, having us. We're, we're excited to be here. Um, and excited to be working on the project in your city. Um, so just big picture, um, the uh, our, our architecture firm has been lucky to be doing affordable housing, um, and, and structures like this for the last twenty years. Um, and- And the project, you know, as you all know, your city has a kind of fantastic legacy of modernist and other important architectural structures that go back, you know, to Lotner and Fray and run to the present day. And so, you know, in designing the project, we really sought to create a contemporary project that would be worthy, you know, an extension of those goals and those, that legacy that you have in your city. And so from the, from a big picture, the design is created to really emphasize the kind of horizontal, right? It's designed in that kind of modernist idiom that you're all very familiar with. And to create real connectivity between the units and the community spaces and the spaces outside and the streetscape outside, to really create a certain amount of activation and then also to create ample light and air into those units on the inside. You can see the kind of, you know, low-angle roofs and the broad trellises. On the facade, you'll see the kind of patterned stonework, so as the sun comes around, you know, that gets animated over the course of the day. So all those elements are really, you know, kind of building on that modernist design palette. And then from a landscape perspective, the project is also, it's designed from a landscape perspective. And we really imagine that the project is as much a landscape as it is a building. The building isn't one large mass, it's broken down into this kind of series of elements. And within those elements, there's a series of outdoor courtyards kind of interspersed. And then those courtyards have a desert palette, a kind of zerrascape palette, where again, we have the kind of bright colors and strong geometry, which make for a natural counterpoint with the architecture. Happy to go into detail or not, to whatever extent you guys want to talk about things.
Are there questions on the architecture? Commissioner Hirschman?
I had some questions on architecture and some questions on other aspects. Should I just...
Just go ahead.
Okay. So I, in terms of the rendering that you've shown, I just had a question. And I don't know if it's just the rendering, I just, if you could clarify, it looks like some of the interior walls of the units don't go all the way up to the underside of the roof. Is that the intent?
Uh, no, no. The, the walls would go up to the roof, yes. So it's an early phase rendering. You'd see a demising of the wall there, going up to the roof line.
And, and what about like within the units themselves, like the bedroom wall between the bedroom and the living room? They all go up to the roof, right?
Yeah, I think that we might look at, you know, if you have the, you know, between your bedroom and your living room, you want auditory privacy, right? But between your bedroom and the space above, let's say, the bathroom, or between the living room and the space above the bathroom, those spaces could be linked, right? Because the bathroom would have a lid. And so we may have to like, for instance, not, not go all the way up.
Okay. In terms of vertical transportation, the elevators, did you consider in laying out the side aisle, either, either having a second elevator to the very extreme southwest, or maybe not the extreme southwest, but at least the southern portion? Or, or an alternate location if there was just one elevator bank more centrally located?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I think, you know, we could certainly look, I think two elevators for a site of this size is, is very adequate in terms of services. We could look at moving one of those elevators to the kind of southerly, I guess actually it's, yeah, southwest part of the site. But I, I think we also want to have one of those attached to the lobby, right? In terms of when folks come in making, then it goes straight on up. And you'll see that that kind of courtyard area adjacent to the lobby is also accessible directly from parking. So, you know, it is a kind of central location. Yeah, certainly given the, the kind of population, given that, you know, as we all get older, stairs become less and less our friends. Yeah, we could absolutely look at that.
Yeah, I was just looking at the distance one would have to travel if they had to go to the elevator by the lobby and then walk all the way back down to the southwest corner of kind of a track. But, okay, so that's good. This is not a, an architectural question, it's more of a programmatic question. In terms of the common areas facing Stevens and then adjacent to that one, and, and some activities were mentioned like cooking classes and so forth, would the public ever be invited into those sorts of activities from outside the building?
So just based on the experience of our resident services coordinator, these spaces are generally programmed for, for residents. They're primarily used by our residents, but, but yes, they can be used for public meetings or for more public events on occasion as well. And the location of these spaces particularly lend themselves to that use. So they could be made available for in these.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking. They seem like they're going to be really lovely spaces. They're, they're very visible to the, you know, the population outside the building. And if there's like a cooking class and there's extra room available, or there's a Tai Chi class or something along those lines, I think it'd be nice to have some limited slots for people outside the building. That's just my, that's the comment. And then two other things. You talk about thirty percent of mean income and eighty percent of mean income. What is the mean income?
Um, the average income for Riverside County is one thousand two hundred fifty, oh, I'm sorry, that's a trend, fifty thousand three hundred. And these are...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. These are HUD, numbers from HUD.
Okay. So when you talk about thirty percent, thirty percent of fifty thousand three hundred?
Correct.
Okay. And then you touched on transportation, uh, for, uh, for me, not for me, but for, one thing I was thinking about was, was acquisition of groceries. And I'm trying to think, there may be a convenience store close by, but otherwise, there's, you know, there's, it's a, it's a drive to the, to the supermarket. And, and you mentioned, you know, medical and so forth, mental health and so forth. You didn't mention groceries. And I was wondering if there'd be any programmatic resources for that? If they didn't have, if a resident didn't have a car?
I think it's something that we can consider. Otherwise, we could hope that bus access perhaps to the grocery store might also be an option. Or grocery delivery perhaps as well.
Yeah, delivery. There's a bus, yeah, we get to Ralph's in about, probably about forty-five minutes, but...
Bus goes straight down Vissacino to Albertson's and the Sater Brothers.
Oh, there is, okay. And how far is this from Vissacino? It's like one block, right?
No, yeah, to Vissacino and then down Vissacino is about a mile and a half to the...
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, well, thank you. Those are, those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Song, you had your hand up? Your recognition?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first question I have, it's a, it's a bit evolved. So I'll start with the edge of the building on, especially on the southwest area, seemed to be very close to the parking curb. And you require thirty-six spaces and you're providing seventy-two. And with the advent of lifts and other ways of getting around and where we're going with electric cars and share cars and shared uses, as well as your type of funding in which if you do have a commuter car, you also have some opportunities. I'm, I'm wondering, also with the views to the west and the, seems the lack of open outdoor social spaces, have you considered adding three-story on some of the sections, not all of it, so that you can have more ground space to, to integrate with the site design? And as well as having some additional sun controls on the west and south faces of the building? And allow a little bit more room in between the corridors or alleyways that you're creating? Because I, I know you know that people experiences are when we pass by, when we say hello, you know, when we have these kind of awareness of, you know, who we are and, you know, the gossip happens in the hallway, you know, sort of situation. So that's my first question.
I guess one question back to you, I guess. It wasn't clear, were you proposing that we provide less parking as part of that or not? I wasn't clear.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, well, Matt, you want to answer that one? And then I'll talk about the rest?
So we, we have heard concerns in our initial neighborhood outreach that, that people don't want there to be any additional demand overflowing onto the side streets. We don't think that there will be. And we, we feel that seventy-one spaces adequately addresses the demand. But there does seem to be a concern from the neighbors that if we reduce spaces, that there, there might be a problem.
Yeah, I, I think part of that is, you know, I think we would look maybe to all of you to help us determine, you know, what that precise right number is. Because I think from the community's perspective, or some of the community, some of the community I think shares your point of view, but some of the community view that, oh, everybody's going to have a car, right? Which we, based on West Hollywood community housing experience, is actually not true. But then on top of that, you need a lot more spaces, right? For staff and guests and so on. The, the real number of, in terms of need, is probably not quite seventy-one or seventy-two spaces. It, it, it's not thirty-five either, it's probably somewhere in the middle. So, and there's also community concern about too many cars leaving this site, right? Into the adjacent streets. But that, the, the number of parking spaces we provide or don't provide won't really change that. But, so I, I don't know exactly how to strike that right balance in terms of, you know, as it is now, yes, there's probably going to be some empty parking spaces. And those certainly could be outdoor spaces. So I, you know, open to feedback from all of you about where the right balance might be. To, to talk a little bit about the three stories, I, I think we thought it was very important to keep the project to two stories. It's really, you know, the residential neighborhood to the west is, you know, mostly one story, right? And so I, I think there's already a perception in the community, a kind of worry about tall structures. And I think for a lot of people, two stories is already somewhat tall, even though, you know, it's consistent with what's up and down Palm Canyon. So I, I think, I, I guess my take on that would be that taking area back, a little bit of area back from parking to make that more outdoor space, absolutely. Going to three stories, I, I think is something that we would try to stay away from. And then about your note about the corridors, we actually kind of carefully designed it so that you don't ever really have to go past more than four units before you get a courtyard or an outdoor space. And so I totally agree with that, you know, the kind of meeting points of kind of happenstance, right? That's how people interact with each other. And so we really did make it so that you, after you go past four units, you're outside again, or you're at a corner where it opens up. So I, I do think that that's something that we absolutely agree with and have tried to put into the design. Did I get all your questions? That was a multi-part question. I was taking notes.
Right, so, yeah, I have two simple questions now. So it seems roughly the distance between the two stairways is about three hundred fifty feet. Did you consider introducing a stairway halfway in between? So people average, you know, about a hundred feet?
Yes, it is something that we're actually looking at. And in, in, in parallel to the, the previous comment about elevators, could be worthwhile to combine those.
And then the, the last question is about, so all the residents are sort of led back into Palm Canyon to, to get into the community spaces. You do have a double-door corridor. And the, the circulation is such that where is sort of the main door to come in if I want to apply and, and understand what this project is? Because I, I'm guessing that you'll have a lot of people who'll come in and say, how do I buy a unit? Right? You know, well-done, affordable housing people get confused with market study, uh, market rate. So where, where is the front door on Palm Canyon?
Um, the front door on Palm Canyon, there's a, the set of double doors just at the top of the ramp. And it says on the plans, or, yeah, entry. So that into the lobby there. And the passeo is really where, you know, a person who, in a wheelchair, for instance, would come up onto that area and then come into that, to that lobby there. And then, as you noted, there's a double door on the south side of the lobby as well, which if you came and parked as a, as, as a tenant, you could come in there, right? So a lot of people, when I go to get my mail, I'm going to go on that double door. And then also, I think, folks from the community who have parked, for instance, in like the ADA spots, who don't know their way around the building, they're going to make their way along the left side of the building there. And then they can either come in the, they could probably come in that first set of double doors there, just south of the community room. And then they can, that, you know, that's a clear, those are big glass doors, and they have a clear line of sight all the way up into the lobby there.
And, and, sorry, one last one is that the, the hallway or quarters in between the units, those are covered roofs but outdoor, fresh air? Or are they completely conditioned spaces?
They're covered roof, outdoor, and on the second level, some of them are actually open to sky. On the lower level, there's about, there's a walkway above you, so they're not open to sky.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marutse.
Yes, will this project be reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee? No?
No.
I have an answer that I think because it's affordable housing, it might not.
That's correct.
Flip, are you there or David?
Yes, yes, I can respond, Madam Chair. So the project has not gone to the Architectural Committee. When it comes forward as the formal application, consistent with our past practice for an affordable housing project, it did, it did not go to the Architectural Committee because of the limited review that the city has on affordable housing projects.
Are there other questions? I have a couple, as I'm looking, and this is just comments as to how I'm thinking. It looks to me like you're sixty percent occupied will end up with about forty-three spaces required for staff and then some are required for occupants and then some for service providers. And you probably aren't going to need more than fifty-five or sixty spaces in this building to take care of what you need in the way of parking. I, I just want you to, we're not making decisions now, and I don't know how other members of the commission feel, but my experience is that both a housing financer, affordable housing, and a developer and manager is that you, I'd rather see... housing, and a developer and manager is that you, I'd rather see you uh review and think about whether more of the space could be open space.
You'd be happy to take a look at that.
Um it's uh I know there's a concern from the neighborhood, but I don't think it'll be a concern once it's, once it's built and they see the actual use. Um I would be generous on the side of providing it, but I'd give a lot of thought to not requiring, not putting the the full amount in. Uh I've got a question about how do you access the front, given the grade? I see that you have steps, is there any ramping there so that somebody who's in a wheelchair or um possibly it can't walk that well can get into the development from Palm Canyon?
Yes, um the plans that you have are, uh as they were submitted a couple week, a week or two ago, are slightly out of date. So there's a slightly more updated set now that reflect the accurate survey of the of the um of the site. There there, on the plans that you have, there's a schematic ramp, which is shown by some pointy arrows going back and forth, uh just on the top side of the passeo area. That's now been changed into a straight-run ramp, but it's still in that general vicinity. So basically, if you get off the bus, you're right at the bottom of that ramp. The bus stop is actually right in front of that passeo and you come up that ramp and come in the the main lobby entrance at the top of that ramp. And then there's a quite a bit of differential in grade overall on the site. So at the Palm Canyon West Stevens Corner, it's only two, three feet there, whereas at the far other end, it's a bit more. And so, yeah, the ramp's really in the middle to kind of facilitate that.
It looks like it doesn't have to be a visible, but it's a natural ramp?
Um say that differently so I can understand, sorry.
It's not like a constructed ramp, it's a natural ramp that moves to the grade?
Um it will be integrated among the steps, if that makes sense. So there'll be steps on the side and the ramp will come up. The um uh the ADA code will require us to have handrails on either side, um but they're actually not uh guardrails in that uh if we took them away, there's really no place to fall, the steps are on either side of it.
And the last question that I want to ask is, we have a commercial district that we're very proud of, um that has come, that has been developed with the Arrive Hotel and the properties around it and the sushi restaurant across the street. And I know that, uh have you given consideration to putting something there that augments that that little retail district? And I know that the neighbors were concerned about that and I think that's something, have you, I have you looked at that? Have you decided you can't do it? Is there, is there a reason that you're not looking harder at putting something in that's a little more retail-oriented?
Yes, I can, I can speak to that. So uh our original proposal did include a small commercial component or a commercial component on Palm Canyon Drive. Um we did reach out to several um restaurant owners, um particularly here in the city of West Hollywood. Um we have noticed there is a lot of sort of cross-pollination with my small chain restaurants opening locations both in the city of West Hollywood and Palm Springs and received some initial uh interest, but then um but now two of those restaurants have not reopened and the third, of course, is struggling and um the the timing for sort of expanding or opening a new restaurant to a retail space has become, it's just really disastrous at this point. So um so that has made it very, very difficult to identify a tenant ahead of time. Without a tenant in hand, um basically there aren't sources of funding for affordable housing that that would actually contribute towards that component of the construction of the commercial space. And even conventional financing is, of course, um very tight right now for speculative um commercial retail space. So we are not currently requesting that there be a commercial space on Palm Canyon Drive, but um but we do remain flexible if if the market changes, there is room. And as you've noted, there may be parking capacity um to accommodate a small commercial space if if the market changes and the timing is correct um with regards to the development.
And and just in, as you're looking at that, do you, do commercial, do you have commercial spaces in the other projects you've developed so you have the ability to deal with the tenant issues or would that be a huge stretch for you?
We do have um multiple mixed-use buildings. So we have um two affordable housing buildings with office space at the ground floor and we have a third, uh which is also is an affordable senior project, seventy-four affordable senior units and a Trader Joe's at the ground floor.
Too bad we can't get you to integrate a Trader Joe's.
A Trader Joe's would be perfect.
Uh, okay, are there other questions? Uh any guidance, any thoughts of what you might like them to think about as they redesign, as they work on this project before they bring it to you? There being none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Commissioners. Very appreciate it.
Okay, moving right along, uh the second item before us is um uh DT PSB dash three LLC for a major architectural application to construct a six-story eighty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven square foot multifamily residential condominium building with sixty-two units located on block B one of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan at the northeast corner of Bellardo Road and Museum Way, uh two, two hundred north Bellardo Road. A staff report, please.
Uh Madam Chair, can I announce, uh my employer is presently doing tenant improvements on a property that is owned by this applicant and that property is adjacent to the property being discussed, discussed. So I'm going to recuse myself from the study session and any future vote on this particular property.
And just as a question, is that a voluntary recusal if you talk to our attorney and is it required?
It is uh out of an abundance of caution. I reviewed that with the staff attorney several months ago and um it seems like the prudent thing to do, although not, not literally required.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
We'll see you at the regular meeting session. Uh staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner. So um this is the, an introduction to the block B one residential project located within the downtown Palm Springs specific plan on block B one. Uh it is proposed for an eighty-two thousand five seventy-seven square foot uh residential project with sixty-two units. Um the project has been, so again, this is an introduction and so staff is really bringing this for uh forward to you today to give you an overview of the project, give you, discuss some of the background um so far uh in the review process. And then we would continue this item or we would have the full um public hearing on this project at, uh we expect the November eighteenth meeting. Um and so what we're, the point of our meeting here today is really to give you the introduction uh and let you ask questions of the applicant as well as direct any additional, uh direct us and the applicant to um provide any additional information that the commission might want or need as a part of the review of the project. So I'll begin with the the PowerPoint now and what you see here on the screen is what is being proposed for the project. Uh it is a six-story uh development consisting of sixty-two units. Uh it has been before, uh well, before I get into that, it it's located between Andreas Road and Museum Way uh and east of Bellardo Road and the proposed downtown park. It is behind the two-story commercial building that fronts Palm Canyon uh between the Andreas and Museum Way block. So this project has been reviewed by the Architectural Advisor Advisory Committee on two occasions. They first reviewed it on September eighth of this year and recommended continuation for additional study. Uh the project was again also reviewed on October fifth when the commission, the committee recommended denial of the project based on some inconsistency findings in the architectural review criteria. So what they reviewed on September eighth is what you see here at the top left and what was revised and shown on October fifth is shown on the bottom right. Um they did make some changes, they've added what they, what you see is uh just on the graphic here, it's a rhinoceros head, but it's really just a placeholder to identify a proposed um location for a public art piece. Um that is not the final piece, that is what is really just a placeholder. They've also removed the um upper, or I would, I guess it would be the fourth or third-floor deck uh solar panel to provide additional transparency to the interior courtyard space um that is proposed in the project. Uh you can also see, and I'll get into a little bit more of that in a minute, but they have revised the uh vertical design that you see on the top left to more of a horizontal design with the horizontal eaves that extend um around and wrap around the building, remove some vertical white uh stucco elements that uh you see at the top left and um so those are what, those have been removed and as I said, they now are proposing more horizontal design elements with the eaves. They've also added on the west elevation and on the west interior courtyard elevation some screens and I'll show those to you in just a moment. Um so again, just this graphic shows at the top left what AAC saw initially and then what has been revised and is, will be before you at the next hearing. Uh and that is, they've removed those vertical elements and now are proposing more horizontal design for the project. Um and then, as you see here in the elevation at the bottom left, they are proposing some movable sunscreen um perforated metal panels that the residents can uh move as desired uh on their specific unit to provide some solar relief for that patio space and the interior windows if the sun does extend into that space. So they've done, they've added those um features there and they um, those are various uh colors that you can see that would be, that could change the kind of rhythm of the building as as those panels move. The, there is an interior courtyard for the project, uh so um this is just a kind of a perspective view showing the high-level um interior courtyard view from above as well as the outdoor pool area where you have the panels that have been removed. As we move into the interior courtyard space, um they've made some adjustments from the initial submittal to include uh some vertical landscape um uh design elements to allow greenery to grow up the facade of the building. Uh and that is, will be achieved through steel cable trellis system um to allow for those climbing vines. And that's done on a a few elevations and so uh what you see is the specific elevation here on the interior courtyard. Uh again, another view of the interior courtyard space looking out towards the uh corner of Bellardo and Museum Way. Uh in addition, the uh and you'll see this in the floor plans, um but what was originally proposed were really just a continual um flat plan view or continual horizontal plan view of the upper floor decks that are the the walkways for the residents. Um and then so with the revised design, they've changed that to allow for these additional planter areas and created kind of a staggered or zigzag um as you see at the top right to accommodate the additional planting as requested by the AAC on September eighth. So again, the original floor plan shows the upper floor uh circulation areas, it's the kind of the lighter gray color on the outside of the units and this was initially reviewed on September eighth. The revised plan shows the kind of staggered um outdoor walkways that uh do allow for additional locations to plant, to have pots and plants to um provide additional greenery on the upper decks. Uh so as we move along the project, this is the south side that you would see facing uh Museum Way or the Kimpton Hotel. And uh again, removing the vertical white element that you see at the top left and revised the project to be more horizontal in design with the continual uh eleva, continual overhang eaves. They also are proposing the steel cable design on the east elevation to allow greenery to grow on the um that trellis system up the elevation uh to soften the building on the east elevation or where the uh the passeo, the pedestrian passeo is located between the two-story commercial building on Palm Canyon and the proposed building here. So uh again, when what you see on the screen, this is just a, what was originally proposed to the AAC on September eighth and then at the top and then what has been revised um and will be before you is what's shown on the bottom on it. And that is the south elevation which faces the Museum Way and the Kimpton. And just so uh the commission has a comparison as to what was approved for the site, um we provided, just to show you, the Virgin Hotel building elevation, which is shown on the top. So this is what was approved by Planning Commission and City Council at the top and as a comparison to what is before you, uh what will be before you at the public hearing is on the bottom. So it's also a six-story, six uh six-story, six-story project that has been approved here previously. The elevation that was shown to the AAC is shown at the top and the revised elevation is shown on the bottom um for the residential project. The AAC had some concerns that um it was too monolithic in its appearance and did not have enough um greenery as uh as they've revised to show you on the bottom with the new planting on the upper floors. And they've also depicted on the ground floor a proposed uh public art installation that would be installed. Again, it's really a placeholder, the final detail and design of that art piece would be uh decided at a later point. And so that's shown in yellow on the ground floor of the bottom elevation. And so this would be the elevation that faces the passeo and the two-story building in front of Palm Canyon. Uh and also, just for reference and comparison, the Virgin Hotel uh project is shown at the top and what's, what will be before you is on the bottom. Original design for the the project here at the top, shown to AAC on September eighth and the revised design on October fifth is on the bottom. Uh and this is the west elevation facing the downtown park. Obviously, we, as I mentioned, they've removed those um box or rectangular element um that were appended to the elevation and created more of a continual horizontal design. Uh and also, again, for the, for comparison, the Virgin Hotel is shown here on the top uh on the west elevation of that project and then what is being, is before you today is on the bottom. On September eighth, the AAC reviewed the top elevation and then the revised design was shown uh here on the bottom for the north elevation or what faces the parking lot and Andreas Road. And again, just a comparison of what was approved for the Virgin Hotel site or the Virgin Hotel project on the top and uh the revised design on the bottom. The applicant is proposing uh various desert-appropriate plant materials uh as a part of the project, as you can see here in this graphic. Of course, much of the street trees have been installed for the project and those are kind of on the perimeter of the sidewalk areas uh as well as along the passeo. So they uh they will be installing additional landscaping as a part of the development. Uh and you can see, uh just for a point of reference, the main lobby is off of Bellardo Road and Museum Way and that would be the primary entry point for guests visiting the site. Museum Way, and that would be the primary entry point for guests visiting the site, as well as anyone, you know, for residents, they do have underground parking for the project. So there is an existing private garage below this site that has already been constructed. The project does include two elevators for the residents. And so what you see on the ground floor is, on the left, is the kind of the fitness room, the communal areas, an office, a lobby area, and then there's a stairwell that is existing at the site currently, and that would be, the APG proposes to continue that stairwell up to the top floor, as well as an elevator adjacent to that. One comment that the AAC had on the second elevator, which is located on the right side of the drawing here, is that they provide the elevator, because the elevator initially was proposed from the first floor up to the sixth floor, in order to allow residents who may live on the northerly side of the building to gain access to the elevator, the AAC felt that the elevator should extend to the underground garage. So the APG has revised the project to extend the second elevator from the garage to the top floor to improve circulation. On the third floor, this is the revised landscape plan. It does show the pool deck area. And then, just to kind of give you a sense of the project, it's, as I said, this is the ground floor. The main entry to the lobby is from Bolardo and Museum Way. A number of units are proposed along Bolardo Road in the beige colors, as well as along Market Street. On the bottom of the drawing, communal spaces on the left side or the south side of the building, and then some of the back-of-house functions are on the north side of the building. As we move up to the second floor, it is all residential units. And then, the third floor does have all the residential units, as well as the proposed pool deck area. There is a proposed barbecue area as a part of that space. And then on the fourth floor, there is a sun terrace above the pool deck, as well as obviously residential units. And the fifth and sixth floor are also residential units. So in terms of the process, this went to the AAC, as I said, on September 8th, and they continued it for further study. The AAC meeting minutes are part of your packet that you received for this item, and then the AAC recommended denial of the project on October 5th. This would go to the Planning Commission. This is obviously before you today as a study session item to give you an overview of the development, and then we would expect that the public hearing would be scheduled for November 18th, and ultimately, City Council will decide on this application because it is within the downtown Palm Springs-specific plan. And so that would conclude my presentation. I am happy to answer questions that the commission may have, and the APG is also available should you have questions for them.
Before we start, we're at 5:19, and there are two things. Do we need to open the Planning Commission and push this back after the Planning Commission, or can we extend this so we have enough time to discuss it? We have a very light topic to begin today.
We can extend the study session, and then, as, you know, once we're ready to begin the regular session, we would start it at that time. But we do need a 10-minute interval in order to take care of some back-of-house video changes that we need to take care of.
Can we just agree that we will start the Planning Commission at 6:30 and give us some time for discussion on this? That would allow you to notify the various applicants for the Planning Commission that the meeting is pushed back?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody's on board for this, yes? Okay. This is open for questions, and I see Commissioner Hirschbein has his hand up. You're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for that report. I've got a couple of questions for staff. What is the height limitation on that site?
60 feet.
And what is the height of the building?
60 feet.
Okay, so it's within the zoning code of the height?
Correct.
Okay. In terms of the AAC reasons for denial, can you just give us sort of the most important points? You know, an elevator moving one side up or down, I don't think that's consequential enough, but do they have some major points that led them to deny this? In my experience, that AAC very rarely denies a project. They've asked for some revisions from time to time, but I haven't seen very many denials. So can you just give us the high-level, maybe three major issues they had with the project that led to the denial?
Yes. So the AAC on October 5th felt that the project overall, its massing, was inconsistent with the architectural review criteria, as well as the scale of the interior courtyard. There was concern that the six-story...
Hang on a second, David. Architectural massing was inconsistent with, massing was inconsistent with architectural review criteria. Could you get any more specific than that? Like, what was inconsistent? What was inconsistency?
The AAC felt that there was some concerns about upper floor relief and creating more void spaces than are proposed. So the AAC did not feel like, you know, their comments were really that it was a box design, you know, vertical, it went flat all the way up to the top. There was no relief as the project rose to the top floor. So that's really what it was about for the massing. And that also kind of...
Thank you.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Oh, no, he's going through all three reasons.
Yeah, no, I want to hear all three reasons, but thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome. So then, the other, and that relates back to the other one I was mentioning, the interior courtyard space. The AAC felt that the interior courtyard space, given its proposed size relative to the six-story height, the AAC did not feel that that was adequate enough in terms of the overall scale for the project. They did not feel it would be a functional space on the ground floor relative to the overall height of the building. And then...
So was that because it was, the proportion of the height was too high to the width of the space? Is that what you're saying, they said?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, I'm sorry.
And then, lastly, really, that the general flatness of it, the vertical design of the building, also, I think that kind of does relate back to the massing and not providing any sort of additional relief.
Okay. So you believe those were the main points that AAC was led to, what their conclusion was based on?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, David.
Other questions for staff? I have one, and I would have loved to see the roof or the overview design on the Virgin Hotel, as well as the overview design on this project. When it comes before us later, can we get both of those?
Yes, yeah. We do have the original exhibits from the Virgin Hotel when it went as a joint session between the AAC Planning Commission and Council in April of 16, I think was the year. But if you wanted to see the comparison, that would be something that we would have to prepare for you.
If we can do that at least later. And the other thing I'd like to see when it comes back to us is the, back when this was first presented to Planning Commission by Mr. Westman, what the treatment of the street was and how the street, the interior street was going to be animated and developed. I'd like to see some of those original renderings of the ground floor and the street area.
Okay, and that would be for the pedestrian paseo on the east side.
For the pedestrian paseo on the east side, and whatever renderings they also gave us of all four sides in terms of pedestrian access and what they originally intended the pedestrian experience would be.
Okay. Yeah, I would also just note that we do have the original Virgin Hotel exhibits as the backup material from your packet, but I'm looking at those exhibits now, and sheet R1.5 shows a rendering of it, as well as R1.7. And so those two exhibits, one of them shows the paseo.
I'm going back further than that. I'm going back to the original site plan for the downtown development and what the streets were envisioned to be. So I want to go back not to, I think, 18 or 17, but I want to go back, is it 14? It's a long ways back in terms of the renderings that were given to us of that paseo when we approved the downtown development.
Okay, I think it's the, I think it was around February of 16 when we amended the specific plan, and so perhaps that would be the drawings that we'll be providing.
It goes even further back. 16, I believe, we amended the specific plan, but there were renderings of the streets that went back when we first approved the site plan for the downtown of the buildings
Okay, we'll do what we can to find those exhibits.
Okay. Other comments and questions, issues you'd like the applicant to look at, or questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah. David, could you put up a drawing that shows the ground floor plan? Could be that overall landscape plan or something that's descriptive of the ground
So this is the ground floor?
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to ask, is the architect on the call?
This is Michael Brown. The architect, unfortunately, consists of three people. Two of them are sick, but we have the third architect who worked on this project, Doug Moore, sits on the line.
Yes, I am here.
Okay. Could you put the, thanks, Doug. Yeah, could you put that plan up full screen so we have something to look at?
Whatever's happened, we've lost, I've lost a lot of the Zoom video.
It looks like I'm looking at somebody's laptop home screen.
Yeah.
Isn't what you're talking about, what we have, A102?
Yeah, we have it.
It should be A102, yeah.
Okay, well, let's go to A102 then. Eight, four oh eight, four oh nine, four oh one, four oh three, four oh four, four oh five, four oh six, four oh seven, two oh one. What was the number?
A102. The big plan.
Okay. So commissioners, if you could pull up A102 and look at it, because I'm going to ask the architect to take us on a walking tour around the building, starting on Museum Way, headed for the museum from Palm Canyon. And I'd like you to describe what a pedestrian would see as one walks down Museum Way on the sidewalk on the same side of the street as the building, turns the corner, walks down Bolardo Way as you're facing the new public park, and then come down Andreas, and then walk down the paseo. So could you describe for us specifically, if I'm the pedestrian looking at the building, what I would see?
Yes. Okay, so you're traveling north on the drawing from Palm Canyon up Museum Way, and at ground level, you will see about a two-foot planting strip, and behind that would be a storefront glazing system essentially, looking into the fitness room.
Is it a planter or just a planting bed at the level of the street?
It's a raised planter.
How high?
Roughly 30 inches or so.
So is there an opportunity to sit on the edge of that planter?
There would be, I believe, yes.
Okay, so keep going.
Okay. We can refer to some of the renderings after we take the tour here.
Well, I just want you to take me on a walk around the building. I want to know what I'm going to see.
So then, as you pass the fitness room, then you come up against the lounge area for the project that's treated in a similar fashion. And then you continue on to the leasing office or the management office of the project, and they're all treated similarly in terms of their views in and out.
And is there any access between...
No, not directly from the sidewalk.
Sorry?
Not directly from the sidewalk, no.
So there's no access from the sidewalk into any of those spaces?
No, you would have to come down to the corner of Museum Way and Bolardo, and underneath the overhang of the building, where the slightly angled wall is, is essentially the main unit to the complex. So you would, as a tenant, you would enter in there, or as prospective tenant, enter and then go into the office.
Uh huh, okay.
Continuing down Bolardo, there's a sort of an angle there that is serving as a buffer between the windows and glazing of the units that face Bolardo Road.
Okay, wait, wait. Before you get there, what's on that very corner? It says Area WA or something? I can't read that. What is that?
Oh, that says Area Way. That's a, it's an open ventilation shaft that is to the underground parking that's in place.
That's a good...
So it's already existing.
And how tall is that?
Gosh, I'm not sure. I think it's, again, it's about, you know, waist height, 32 inches high.
Okay. And then, there's sort of a plaza out in front of the lobby area?
Yes.
And what am I looking at? What distinguishes that plaza?
Well, there are, the two columns there are holding up the swimming pool, which is two stories above where you're standing there. So it's the overhang of the building.
I don't care what's above me.
Okay.
I want to know what I'm experiencing. What distinguishes that plaza?
Well, it's more of an entry porch, and it would be...
Whatever you call it, I don't want to quibble about semantics. What am I looking at?
Well, you're looking at storefront that comes around that gives you a view into the lobby.
And how... And how tall is that storefront?
Well, it's, it's 10 feet tall. It's one story tall.
Okay, anything else in that front porch area? It's a big area.
Yeah, it's a big area. It'll be probably most identified with, with the flooring or the, the ground, the concrete, the stamped concrete material that's going in down there, or paving, or tile work that we, that we.
This, this, this is Michael Brown. I need to clarify a couple of things, if you don't mind, Mr. Hirschbein, is that okay?
Go ahead.
At the entry, the entry was chosen there to open up the corridor that people see the public parks, the event space that's going to come. The shaft is flush with the sidewalk. A pedestrian, then behind the shaft, we plan for another art piece, a public art piece to activate that space and make that a nice entry.
Can, can you tell me where that is?
It is on the, right behind the air shaft, so when the, there will be a flush wall, where then the storefront starts, and we will install, and I don't have, we have not picked the art pieces yet, we will do that together with the Art Commission, but it needs, or we plan to do a high caliber art piece similar to the Isabel statue.
So it's going to be somewhere between the air shaft and the lobby glazing, is that what you're saying?
Correct, right on the corner, where the elevator shaft is.
Where the elevator shaft is. Where is that? I don't, I don't see that.
Yes, Michael, I think you're talking about the one that's shown as the rhinoceros head?
No, that's the rock.
On the rendering?
The rhinoceros head, the rhinoceros head is on the top of the elevator shaft, and at the bottom.
Is it possible to use a pointer?
Basically, let's say this way, it's the corner of Museum Way and Bellardo where the entrance is. It's a wide, big entry entrance, and on the entry corner of Museum Way will be an art piece placed, and on the other side of the entry on Bellardo Road will be a water feature.
Okay, so you haven't identified, you haven't identified where in that front porch area this art piece is going, is that what you're indicating?
That's correct. It's, it's not located there.
Okay, okay, all right, so other than the art piece, there's a water feature as I turn the corner and walk down Bellardo, is that right?
Yes, the, the bit that's rendered in sort of tan is actually intended to be the water feature with the project sign as a monolith sign.
I can't really pick out the water feature on this. There's two, it looks like there's two trees in the middle of it, is that right?
Yeah, and it's really intended to be more of a water feature than it is a, a planter at this point, so.
So is it a water feature with the trees growing out of it?
No, it, it won't be. When it comes back, if that's a wa, if we decide that's going to be a water feature, it'll be rendered as water.
Okay.
It shows, if you pick up the landscape plan from Tom Dossi, he switched the water feature from the corner of Bellardo Water Museum Way to Bellardo Road, because we wanted to avoid that somebody's going to walk, a pedestrian who's going to cross the street there might step into the water feature, and so we put it on the other side. That's a safer space.
Okay, and is there a wall around it? It looks like there's a wall around the water feature, is that right?
Yes, it'll be a raised water feature.
And how high is that wall that wraps around the water feature?
Well, that'll be roughly 18 to 20 inches, sitting level.
Okay, all right, keep going.
And so as you continue down Bellardo Road, there's the, the planting buffer strip for the, to give some, some privacy to the units there.
Is it a strip or is it a raised planter?
It's a raised planter again. The, the grade, the grade changes, so it varies in height.
From?
From, from 24 inches at the, at the south end by the water feature to roughly 18 at the, at the other end.
Okay, so it's a 20 inch to 18, so it's only a two inches variation. And then, what about behind the planting bed? What, what, what will I be looking at there?
You mean in, in terms of planting materials?
No, I mean in terms of the building.
Well, those are high windows that are intended to, to give some light to the back of those units.
You're talking about the bathrooms?
Well, some of them will be spandrel panels, so that, that they will be solid, but they will keep the same appearance and character as if it were a continuous glass wall.
But are you having windows into the bathrooms?
If there are windows in the bathrooms, there will be high windows that will be above eye level.
Okay, so there's windows into the bathroom, and then windows into the kitchen area?
Yes.
Okay, and then, what is the material, wall material on that wall?
The material will be, it's going to be mostly storefront glazing on the first two levels.
No, I, I don't care about the first two levels. I'm talking about what I'm going to see as I'm walking down the street.
Okay, it's, it's going to be storefront glazing.
Okay, wall-to-wall storefront glazing.
Correct.
Okay.
Wait, I'm sorry, let me back up. There will be some intermediate painted metal panels that come down that will be, you can see on the elevations when we go there and look.
Okay. It's a combination of clear glass, opaque glass, and metal panels?
Correct.
Behind the planting bed?
Yes.
Okay, all right, now I turn the corner and I'm going down Andreas?
Yes, and down, the first bit in the unit will be similar type of, of wall treatment there until we get to the stair.
Okay.
And there, that'll be, there'll be veneer, masonry veneer on the face of that, that stair tower.
Okay.
And then as we continue, it's, the, the building steps back, and we'll have painted smooth stucco there, combined with some painted metal panels as well.
Is that next to the trash room?
Well, the trash room is.
No, no, you're talking about the area next to the trash room when you described?
There's a room next to it that is undefined at this moment, that we're leaving for building utilities, but yes, that, that particular wall.
Okay, keep going.
And then it steps back some more with a raised door that allows trash to be taken in and out, and also to serve as, as move-in, move-out location. And all of that, that area in there will be painted stucco.
From where to where?
From the stair, where it steps back at the stair, to the end of the electrical room.
Okay, and then keep going?
Then the further units down, the rest of the way down, is a similar treatment to the way that it's treated, the walls treated on Bellardo and Andreas.
So there's, well, here you've got actual living spaces facing the street.
Correct.
So there's more glazing facing the street there?
Yes.
Okay, is that a private patio outside the bedrooms?
It will be for that one particular unit.
And is it raised up off the street?
No, it's not. It's, it's actually recessed from street level.
Below the street?
Yes.
Okay, all right, now I've turned the corner, and I'm in the paseo that we call Market Street. What, what do I see?
Correct. And then, again, all of the, all of the walls of the units along that, that are treated similar to the way that they are on the other three sides.
Okay.
However, on that, I'm sorry, however, the, the middle section will have an art piece, again, that will be, will be a mural to activate Market Street, so people will walk down Market Street, identify themselves with the mural, and hopefully will use it as an Instagrammable opportunity.
Yes.
Can you?
We'll, we'll be.
Sorry, just a second. I'm sorry, I'm getting confused. I just turned the corner, turned right onto Market Street, and I see glazing for that first unit, right, for the living room and the kitchen? And that's a combination of spandrel glass and clear glass?
Combination, yes.
Okay, and then the building steps back, and there's one, two, there's three units in a row there. Will there also be glazing around?
No, that'll be predominantly painted stucco, but it'll fall where now have a, a mural installed there.
Okay, so you're kind of.
So that'll be a solid wall to allow the mural to be on.
So that whole wall is solid, and that whole wall will be the mural?
Yeah.
I'm kind of losing the audio on you, I don't know why.
Yeah, Mr. Hirschbein, to confirm, yes, that whole wall will be a mural, most likely drawn by a local artist. And then between the mural and the units is also another exit point or entry point that will be glazing, so that from there, the tenants of the building can access the courtyard into their spaces. Yeah, there.
Yeah, on either side of that bank of units.
Yes, those will be solid, I mean, they'll be open with just gates.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, thanks for taking me on that tour. It, it clarifies a lot. I hope it does for the commission as well. Sorry to take up so much time.
Commissioner Hirschbein, I, I heard you mention also about the little squares that are there. Did you get the answer for the little squares that were there?
Yeah, I think I realized they're planters, but you can clarify that for us.
The squares that are along Market Street?
Yes.
Those are existing planters that are, that are in place now.
Right, okay.
If I may make, if I may make one clarification, and Mrs. Womack, as you asked before, the reason we chose residential units on the ground floor and the office, the gym, and the lounge room on Museum Way is that our experience leasing these three blocks, block A, B, and C, and we tried to lease spaces facing Market Street, and we were unsuccessful. We interviewed various brokers, we spoke to many tenants to try to lease spaces in the second goal, and unfortunately, every tenant, considering the amount of money they need to invest in a nice store built out, wants to be on Palm Canyon and does not want to go in the backside. So instead of having empty storefronts there, we decided that it's better for the building to have the activation via residential units, and then I said, the activated spaces along Museum Way with glazing to show the gym, the office space, and the lounge.
Thank you. Other questions of the app, or questions or comments, things you'd like the applicant to think about? Commissioner Song? Commissioner Song?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Doug, did you have a chance to rethink the northeast corner unit, residential unit? In the landscape plan of the frontage on Andreas, it shows a really generous tree line and, and, you know, planting bed and so on, but on Market Street, the spandrel glass and so on, you know, compared to the art wall, it, it seems vulnerable and exposed. Have you had a chance to think of how you may introduce more privacy onto that northeast corner unit?
Well, privacy, we haven't really considered much from this. The, the intent was more to continue the character of the, of the wall treatment on the other sides of the building around and, and continue it back. But we could certainly think about, as the building turns the corner, that maybe that, that wall treatment more along Market Street needs to become a little more opaque, and that more of spandrel glass needs to be used there to give it some, some visual buffer from Market Street.
Yes, as a matter of fact, if you look at your north elevation, how you have treated that corner, that wall treatment comes down much lower than on the, on the east elevation.
Uh huh.
Yes. The second question and last question I had was, besides what Mr. Brown had mentioned about connecting the lobby to the, you know, park and the event spaces, in your sort of site design on, on, on the, on that planter bed that angles, and I believe it's more like 42 inches, did you have a chance to look at how that sort of reacts or composed to the park across the street?
Well, we, we haven't really compared the, our design with, with how the, the park is, is working more than, than just providing a, a landscape buffer there.
Yeah, you're quite challenged because of the grade difference. Yes, but in, in sort of the urban setting, I, I hear your answer, yes, thank you.
Are there other questions? I have some, if there aren't. Commissioner Root say?
I reviewed the AAC video from the most recent meeting they had. And it seems there was some concern about the courtyard having direct sunlight, excuse me, only for a few hours a day, and the rest of the time it might be quite dark. I heard the response, I believe it was of the architect at the time, and, and so forth. So do you want to just repeat for the public how you responded to that concern?
Well, I, I think that our, our thought was is that in the, the heat of the summer, a sheltered shaded location that you might want to spend, an outdoor space, is going to benefit from having a, a bit more protection from the direct sun. And in the, sort of the, the cooler months, then it, there's coverage there, and, and it becomes a, sort of a cozier space in that area. So I, I, I believe that was essentially what our thinking for that particular space was. And in terms of scale, to direction of the design of the balconies, there's also some impression and release that we are providing in that space as well.
This is Michael Brown, I would like to add some color there. First of all, if you, and I'm sure everybody of, of the commission has been in downtown Palm Springs, the courtyard west and how you, how that feels can be actually seen live when you walk from Museum Way to the Isabel statue. And that is the Kimpton Building and Block C where we have the residential units. So the height of the residential units of the two-story building above House of Pokey is about 42 feet if I recall that correctly, and then obviously you have the Kimpton Hotel on the other side. So that can show you the condition, how this courtyard would feel like. The reason for the courtyard is to activate that space, and the thinking behind it was that we believe loneliness is the biggest pandemic and biggest problem in our society today. So the courtyard was designed for this particular purpose, that people will greet and meet in that courtyard when they enter the building. If, if you look at the building where the elevator is, elevator shaft is with the Reno heads, we removed one of the shade structures there, and there's plenty of lights coming through that opening between the elevation along Museum Way and the elevation on Bellardo Road. So the courtyard will not be dark, it will be actually lighted, and as the sun is rising around that building during the day. And so Tom Dossi, our landscape architect, did not have any concerns about the planting material or the light sources, what can survive in there or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I wanna ask some questions. Commissioner Marutse, are you done? Uh, I've got questions, not about the experience of the courtyard on the ground level, but the experience of the courtyard on the sixth floor and on the interior walkways. It's a pretty confined space, and I would like to see at our, um, final meeting, examples of how that works, places where it has worked. I just have a lot of concern about the, um, the sizing of that space and being on the fifth, fourth, fifth, and sixth floors. Courtyards like that, my, my experience is they work up to about three, three stories. So I'd like you to give thought to that, uh, when you come back to us. And I have some questions about why, when the AAC requested that you look at the courtyard, you look at setbacks and cut-throughs on the higher floors, the things that they turned your project down on, why you didn't look at them between the first and the second meeting?
Um, the setbacks, I appreciate your comments, uh, on the courtyards. The courtyard was envisioned, uh, based on, uh, similar buildings that have been built, especially in Europe. Uh, especially in France and Italy, you have similar conditions that work very well there and are welcome there and create, uh, I call it the socialization of the building, uh, so that people, um, interact with each other. Uh, one of the other reasons for the courtyard is that our studies have shown that people wanna have, uh, mountain views. They do not wanna look at the city. Um, tastes are differently, so that's why we oriented all units looking at the mountains, and each unit has a mountain view with the exception of the ground floor, uh, levels. Um, as to the walkways, the AAC had some very constructive document, uh, comments there that we should add planters and make them wider, so we can show you their, um, additional, uh, cross-sections to, uh, understand that a little better. But there, the idea was also open-air walkways, and again, that people meet each other and feel comfortable to talk with each other in an open-air environment versus in a closed building where you're just in a closed hallway. We didn't like that.
When this comes back to us, I, and this is just asking, I'm not asking for justifications. Now, I'm asking you to think about it and bring us examples of buildings like this that are six stories where that kind of courtyard has worked.
Okay.
I, I'm expecting to you a concern that I'd like you to look at.
And if I, if I may suggest again, uh, if, uh, the commissioners would like to do a field trip or individually, uh, the similar condition shows, uh, where the Isabel statue is between the House of Poki retail space and the residential units above in the Kimpton Hotel and Star River on the ground floor, that gives you a very good feeling about the west of the courtyard and how that would feel.
Thank you. I've walked that many times. Uh, the other thing I'd like you to look at, and, and one question is how this is being constructed. Is it a podium on which you're gonna do stick built above, or is it, what is the construction of the building?
It's a two-story concrete, uh, concrete podium, and then, uh, the third, fourth, and fifth and sixth floor are, uh, is metal studs or wood frame.
And one thing I would like you to look at is, um, the ground floor, and I'd like you to take a look, when you come back to us, at the, we've received several letters on this. Um, the one I found most instructive was from Doug Hudson, I think it's dated October sixteenth, and it talks about the ground floor level. Um, we typically, in every housing development we've developed, we've required an access from the units onto the street. Uh, we've done that with, um, Icon, we've done it. There are a range of projects where we've required that they have some way of exiting from the unit, the ground floor unit, onto the street. And the, um, the, the letter talks about looking at, on the first floor or two, looking instead at Marionette-type units, uh, maker spaces, if you can't put retail, looking at some way that activates that ground floor. So I, I want you to give consideration to that. Um, I've been impressed with the level of comments we've received, um, on the building. Uh, one supporting you that asks for more ground floor uses, uh, some that call the building having just a very generic design that could be located anywhere, uh, or a decorated box, and, and I want you to think about those. Um, I ended up liking the massing on the Virgin Hotel and the step-backs from the park in the front, where there was, where the courtyard was actually more on the front, maybe a second or third level. But look at and, think through the design in terms of the relationship to the park. Um, and that building had more height, but it had more step-backs. And those are things that would be of concern to me when I look at the building that's in front of us. So I'm trying to give you comments that are things that I've looked at when I've thought about the building, um, and what its relationship to Market Street is and to the park and to the side streets, and how that relationship, um, could be animated.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Marutse?
I was just wondering, for the units that are on the east elevation, how would they have views of the mountains, even up to the sixth floor?
Hey, look, they have, they are, all the units can look, uh, basically through the opening where the rec center is on the second floor, these units, uh, can look through that opening on the mountains.
Oh, I see. So it's the gap, the, the people are looking through that gap?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Are there other comments? Anything else we would like? Commissioner Hirschman?
Uh, I didn't make any comments, I was just asking for information, but if you're asking for comments-
I think we're asking for things to them to look at when they come back to us, concerns you, you have.
Yeah, I, I have a concern about the ground floor, as my questions might have indicated. Um, the city is spending over fifteen million dollars on the park across the street, and the applicant is proposing bathroom windows facing it, and-
We, we can't go into the units. We have no purview over the units. Massing?
I'm just giving you my comments, so if you don't want me to, I won't, but if you do, I'll go on.
Okay.
Uh, the city's spending fifteen million dollars, probably more than that, on the park across the street, and on the ground floor we have either a blank wall or bathroom windows facing it. I think that's, uh, probably not, I won't say that. In my view, that's not the right presentation to the park. It, it's gonna demean the value of the park. It's also, I think, short-sighted of the applicant to say, up until this point, there's been no interest in retail or restaurant uses back from Palm Canyon. Well, I don't know that, when you have those discussions, this really glorious park with a wonderful water feature, attracting kids and adults, uh, it's gonna be heavily programmed with community events, was known. And, and I, I think it might be short-sighted to, to, um, assume that nothing's gonna happen on that site. Uh, and I think it's important for the city, having spent all this money on the park and the infrastructure, uh, allowing the rest of the downtown project to be built out, the relationship of the museum itself to the, uh, downtown parcels. Uh, it's important to attract, uh, public pedestrian activity down Museum Way, Andreas Way, and, and, uh, appropriately addressing the park on Bellardo. So, and I, I don't see the building doing that at this point. I, I don't have any problem with, 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 uh, residential, uh, on the site as long as there's- Sorry? Oh, I, I don't have any problem with residential on this site, um, but there has to be some, uh, there doesn't have to be. My, my opinion is that there should be some, uh, uh, public activity on, on the ground floor as well.
So you're asking the applicant to think about that?
Very hard thoughts.
Are there any other comments? Um, this is a really important site to the city. It's, it's much more important than other sites that aren't in the redeveloped downtown. And our concern, I think, I think it's just, it's, it's important also to look back and see what was promised to the community when the downtown was started. Um, and to refer back to that, which is why I asked for some of the original renderings of the street and streets. So those are things I'd really like you to look at. Um, and I'd like you to think hard also about the AAC issues, uh, as, as they raise them to us. Um, the use of the building, the high-end condos, I think, I haven't heard any concern expressed about the uses that you're proposing here. Um, I think we share with you wanting the best building possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I think the, um, we can wrap this up. We look forward to hearing from you in a couple of weeks. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, at this point, I'm going to close the, uh, study session, and we will resume at six-thirty, so you have a few minutes, uh, to catch dinner.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to remind the Planning Commission members that you'll need to sign off of Zoom and then use the second link that I sent you this morning for the regular Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, and we'll reconvene at six-thirty.